Calling this meeting to order, clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePanyan?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Here.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Present.
Mayor Melvin?
Here. So try.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. Editions of the double times and star ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the double temple bulletin board, and copies are in file in municipal service books.
Pledge of leaders.
Pledge of leaderships to the public.
May I have a say in the matter?
To the people of the state.
My decision.
The decision.
Will be taken just as well.
Next on my agenda is report to the manager. You will notice that our manager is not here today. First meeting, I think he's missed in his tenure, but we have a very strong second in command here in Belleville. I know he will rise to the occasion today and do just a great job. So chief?
Thank you, Mayor.
It's all yours.
Don't have too much tonight. Anthony missed up me a little bit. March 19th is our Dog and Cat Rabies Clinic, which will be held at Fire Headquarters, 275 Franklin Avenue, 9:00 AM to 12:30 PM. That's always good. Public Service is offering payment assistance. Customers that are having difficulty with keeping up bills during the pandemic can apply to pseeng at njpoweron.org. So if you have any questions on that or pseeng website. All right, on our website, we are asking residents to take a quick online survey at washingtonavenetotgethernorthgeorgie.com. This quick survey can help prepare a new vision to revitalize Washington Avenue. And what they do when they gather all that information, then it's when we get all the grant money to help revitalize Washington Avenue. Good thing to do if people participate in this, all right?
Yes.
Two minutes.
Nice.
That's it?
So if anybody has any question, though?
Was that your report, or did Anthony email that to you, and did you do that report? I'm asking for a reason.
Okay, that's the manager's report, and he asked me to fill in form, which is what I do, so that's what I did.
So mayor, do you spare?
It mirrors a lot of my reports. It mirrors. Anybody have questions from the manager?
Yes, I do. So chief?
Yes, sir.
I know it's off the cuff. Maybe you can find out first, but can you give us an update on the meter situation here in Belleville? I've been asking for two and a half years, and still the same status quo.
Yes, I believe our CFO is not here, but I believe there's some developer money on that. What I'll do, councilman, I will look into this tomorrow. I'll look into it tomorrow, and I will get back to you. We are going to get started on that soon. There's all sorts. Funny, you bring it up to, I got a call from Silver Lake area, the church, wanted to know where we are with that lot here, too. So it's all coming into play. Like I said, I just got to check on the funding for the meters, and I think that's how close we are, but I'll just go confirm that.
Can we, because I have some other questions about meters, especially the two big ones in the parking lot, and also the availability. We talked about this at a work session a while ago. The old Spencer now, the old DeWitt Bank. Is it Spencer now?
No.
That's Spencer.
That empty lot next to it, right on Washington Avenue, about metering that and revenue share with them. So why don't we, Madam Clerk, can we just put this on for a work session topic?
That'll be a good idea. We'll have a lot more answers by then. Council of Graziano and Mayor want a lot more.
And if I may, the meters that went in at the two parking lots?
Yes.
Yeah, they're new, really antiquated, paper. If we can look at something more automated?
We, it's funny, again, it's funny you brought that up. We did discuss that when we got them. We just needed to get something at the time. But our purchasing department, we were able to upgrade them when we get the new meters for the avenue. So it wasn't a loss, like we had to replace everything. There's an upgrade for that, councilman, which we were. That was talked about, Anthony and myself, in our purchasing department. And when we do go full force with the rest of the avenue, there's an upgrade for that.
And if I'm not mistaken, you are correct that there is money slated from the redevelopment?
I believe there's some redevelopment funds strictly earmarked for parking and meters and such. So I can't give you any figures or funds.
Definitely for Belmo.
I really don't know. Yeah, I'm pretty sure there's a few.
Washington, too.
I think Washington, too. I just can't give you any numbers right now. I'll check.
Thank you.
So that's going to be our second topic, Kelly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Can I ask anyone?
Anybody else to the manager?
Thank you.
Great job as a manager. Next, then, report to the mayor. So a few upcoming events that our manager missed. We have a, and I'm going to overlap a few of them. I believe it's going to be next Monday at 1:00 here at Town Hall, we have Dominican fly grazing on March 19th. The manager did mention we do a rabies clinic from 9:00 to 12:30 at Fire Headquarters. That's always a very popular event. On March 22nd, the library is doing a cryptocurrency seminar, which I think is going to be really valuable to residents that are interested in cryptocurrency. March 22nd at the library. And if you check our website, spring recreation programs, we are currently registering certain sports, as well as offering tryout information. That's it for upcoming events. As far as news goes, today I sat on my mayor's conference call with the county. Every single mayor in the county gets on the conference call. We used to do it every two weeks during the height of COVID. We're down to only doing it now once a month. One of the things that came out of today's meeting is the fact that as of April 2nd, the county will be closing down two of their COVID testing and vaccination centers, which I guess is a good sign. It's April 2nd. On March 8th, we have International Women's Day. There's information on our town website about that. We're going to be once again doing the program where we honor different women. And if you have any nominations, please see the contact information on our township website and submit honorees for that event. I know it was very positive and uplifting. I stepped in last year on that. We're going to talk about, no councilman Cazarelli, we'll talk about next meeting, but we did receive a nearly $300,000 grant for Safe Streets. But I'll let the councilman explain that at the next council meeting. Again, $300,000 grant. Belleville's been doing very, very good in the grant game. Yeah, that's for the light rail area there. So our grant team's been doing a great job on that. As the manager mentioned, Washington Avenue survey, please let out, I shared it. And as usual, when I share things on social media, there was a lot of commenting, and a lot of comments were complaints about Washington Avenue yet. I don't believe most of those people actually went forward and actually did the survey. So I kept commenting back to them, saying thank you for your feedback, but please go fulfill the survey, because the people that are receiving the data from the survey aren't going to be looking at my Facebook comments. So please, if you have not done so already, make sure that we do the Washington Avenue survey. We are still moving forward. It's actually getting stronger, and I'm proud to say, our home improvement program, $1.6 million in it. We are finally getting word out to residents. At this point, I think we're a victim of our own success on that. There's only, I believe, three qualified contractors that do this work. So if you know contractors, please get the word out. We have a pot of $1.6 million non-taxpayer money to fix up homes. I know the manager sent out some notices in the West Water Bill. I think that really worked well, because I'm told that we get a lot more information, a lot more feedback, or inquiries, I should say, to that. Last but not least, Tuesday, Thursday Club seniors. Today, I heard from the Tuesday Club, the Tuesday Club will be back in attendance physically at our senior center on March 1st. I'm not quite sure about the Friday Club. I haven't heard back from them yet, but we did touch base with them. And that being said, there are programs going on. There's programming happening at the senior center. There's Tai Chi yoga and Zumba every single Tuesday, and there's also, I'm sorry, there's Tai Chi yoga every Tuesday and Zumba every Friday, and Thursday. I'm getting confused, because I wanted to say that it has no real bearing on the Tuesday or Friday clubs. That's open for any senior. I've had people ask what the age requirements are. It's active adults. We're never going to turn you away. If you want to go and do Tai Chi and yoga and Zumba, please go. And we're excited that at least so far, the Tuesday Club is committed to coming back and we await information on the Friday Club. That's all I have. My mayor's report. Next on my agenda is the approval minutes.
Longest time, Mayor. I apologize, but next meeting I will have.
Okay. Next, we have communications.
Got a receipt from Twigs asking permission to renew fees throughout the township. The check received from the Safe Valley Sewage Commission in the amount of $21,737.47 for connection fees from projects referred to the Safe Valley Sewage Commissioner's connection office by the Township of Belleville. See, request received from Green Team in partnership with the Bellevle Women's Club to satisfy part of the Sustainable Jersey Grant for water conservation for permission to change the landscaping in front of the Bellevle Senior Citizen Building. And D, letter received from Dean Donatelli Esquire, redevelopment council to the township regarding resolution number 21-224 of the mayor and council directing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine the property known as Bellevle Industrial Center, located at 705-707 Main Street, constitute a condemnation area in need of redevelopment. The planning board attached to Bellevle was to discuss this resolution at the February 10th, 2022 meeting, but the meeting was adjourned, and they did not proceed with the matters on the agenda due to questions of the validity of appointments to the board. And E, received Gabrielle Bennett meeting to discuss storm water management.
So I guess normally, we reserve presentations and stuff for the first meeting of the month, but we just wanted to get this one on. Gabby was ready, well able to come and assist. Gabby's background professionally is in this space. We're very lucky to have our team in many different facets. So without further ado, we've got five, six, eight minutes or so for you. So if you want to just come up, just somebody, please make sure that microphone is on. Gabby wants to talk to us about storm water management, which is a very good timely topic, I think, for Belleville at this point.
Reading right now.
Yep.
Reading right now.
Yep, I just wanted to say, because you have been very proactive with the flooding on Fairway Avenue, so I wanted to make sure that we continue and expand that activity through the township. And what we need to do next is have a storm water management survey conducted. So you need to go out and seek that professional, but what they will do is they will come in and they will look at Belleville's whole township, because there's not just flooding on Fairway Avenue. It's in a couple of places in the township of Belleville. They'll look at your infrastructure. They'll look at the watershed as a whole. They'll look at the smaller tributaries. They'll look at the large Passaic River Basin out into North Bay. They'll look at modeling and maps that show different types of topography and where drainage backups may occur. They will look at the neighboring towns and how that whole watershed plays a key role when the water moves through different towns and into our area. They'll look at whether that comes from rainwater or tidal flooding from storm surges, or just that regular King's Hide that comes every once in a while. This is important, and I think you attended a meeting in November with our neighbors. Nutley called for a meeting and said, you know, we want to talk about the Third River again. Like I said, we should expand it. And they got together, and these two towns have already sought out a storm water engineer to do that kind of study in those towns. Now, why you want to do this? Because most importantly, there's also funding attached to it. So the FEMA mitigation, the hazardous mitigation money is there. It has to be spent. The state OEM knows about it. Once you get the document done and it's ready, it makes it much easier to apply for some kind of doable project, whatever that project may be. So I don't think you guys should let this go off your radar. I think you should pursue this, put your request out, and have a study done for Belleville as well. You know, I always say there's, I'll just close this with my little saying, and that is that we put the boundaries on the map, but nature has no boundaries, right? And the frequency of the rainstorms are coming much stronger and much more, and it's now localized flooding is becoming an issue in what we're calling urban flooding.
So Gabby, I don't, thank you. Very informative. I don't know if you've had the opportunity. I recently came across the Essex County 2020 plan. I don't know if you've ever?
Yep, I have it.
If you could just take a peek at that, because I think there was maybe an error in that. Because when you compare Belleville to Bloomfield, they give a number of residents that are in flood zones.
Yes.
And in Belleville, it's 36,000, and in Bloomfield, it's like 800. So I, there might be a typo in that, there might not, because I was very curious to see how many residents, how many houses, how many houses are in a flood zone. I think there might be.
How many have repetitive losses?
It's the cover. It's right on the cover and like a infographic.
Yes.
And I think it might be wrong. I'm curious to know what the real number is going to be.
Yep.
But you are correct. I did attend that meeting. It has the Maritucci, Bloomfield, and Nutley. Clifton was there. Everybody that was along that route.
That watershed.
I have noticed that Bloomfield, and we've discussed it here, I think at one point, I know that Bloomfield has issued an RFP, so I'm assuming that we can take a peek at what their wording is and kind of copy that RFP to issue, and then it'll be up to the governing body.
I have a copy of that, too.
Okay. And it'll be up to the governing body to decide who we're going to hire to do that after the RFPs go out.
And that hazardous mitigation plan, it was first done in 2014. It was just updated in 2018 and published in 2020. And that's for all hazards. Note that that mitigation plan is not just for flooding, but flooding is a big focus. I have a feeling that COVID will be a big focus when the next plan comes around, which will be 2025. But they're going to start working on that sooner. So if you have this done, that will be very good to have a study.
Do we have any idea the cost? Do we know whether Bloomfield or Nutley paid their consultant to do this?
I didn't call them up to ask.
I'm just curious. I like to call my folks.
Leave it up to Anthony or?
I have an idea by the next meeting.
Yep.
I can find that out. Any other questions?
Through the chair. Real quick, this is what we discussed a couple of months ago. In fact, I think we actually had it on the agenda for discussion a little bit. The other part is, you know, I talked to some of the people. I guess Mikey Sherrill was trying to put in a flood tunnel to help us out a little bit up there. I mean?
Long, long time ago, that flood tunnel was.
Didn't do anything, or?
No, no. So there's, things are a little different now with the FEMA plan and mitigation programs. They're looking for more green infrastructure now, although there's been a lot of resiliency plans out now, and Newark, Jersey City, Hoboken, and maybe Union City were just part of, no, maybe not Union City, were part of a big study. So Newark even already has a plan now for one, and they've already got five projects that are being funded just because of that flood are coming out of these.
Did we ever figure out, I mean, because there's a reservoir that dumps down. Did they ever figure out what's going on with that, or is that part of what's causing our problem when they're on target?
I'm assuming the study all?
Right.
The study will definitely do it.
No, no, I mean, we saw this already. I mean, there was a study done, you know, in 2011, which basically said that some of that stuff was coming down at us. And I know they were supposed to find some sort of mitigation to it, but I don't think they ever did.
I mean, they'll look at the drainage patterns and the issues, and like I said, they'll go outside of your boundaries, and they will go to the other communities, too, and talk to their engineers and see what they have. But all of these engineers now are certified, and they will have access to the things that we don't have access to. So they'll be able to get in there and even look at the modeling.
I was shocked when I came across that plan to see how the data was. I mean, they had our most recent census information, and usually you don't get that. The report that came out a few months ago, you usually got old data, and it was.
No, they're very, very good. Who are the, yes, our folks here that have been working on the plan. It takes a lot to do that, so to have those hours.
Very, though.
Yeah, to be able to do that.
I just think there was one error in it, and I'm curious to know if it's, there's no way, it can't be that.
All right. Well, we'll look at it. We'll ask, or, you know, have the engineer here call and just have a check.
There's no way the entire township of Belleville's in a floodplain.
Yeah.
And they have 36,000 residents in it, so.
And I think, through the chair, I think some of the people that were on this here for the town are no longer heading it up.
Right.
I think those have to be addressed. Chief?
Yeah, so meetings are still happening.
There's two individuals that were heading it up here on behalf of us, well, total three.
They're retired.
Two are retired.
Yeah.
And I think they need to be replaced.
Well, I saw, I saw, I saw the names when I was looking at it. We probably got to replace maybe, I think, one, we might default the OEM coordinator.
Yes.
Marty Lux is no longer here, but now we have Mr. Corbo here. So I think that slot is going to get filled, but I think there might be still one, but we'll.
And if this happens, and I will pick at the brain, the USGS has a project, too. They put these gauges out on all the tributaries. So the closest gauge on the Third River is the gauge that's on the Garden State Parkway, which takes readings of the heights of the river. And of course, during Storm Ida, it spiked, I think, almost up to eight or nine feet. So I think you guys maybe look for a gauge right on Geralman to be placed there to collect. It's always good to just keep collecting the data so that the modeling can be accurately done, because sometimes what's happening upstream is different downstream or will have an effect. And again, they have, the stormwater engineers, they have those calculations. They know how to figure these out, put them down in the plan, and proceed with some type of mitigation that could help. Okay?
I'm thinking, sorry. So mayor?
Yes.
If we may, I would like to, I don't know if it's an ordinance, I don't know if it's a direction, if someone's direction to move forward with bringing a professional in storm water draining here, so we can take that first step in getting the data.
Yeah.
And then approving it.
Yes. Meeting, we'll have, maybe the manager bring people or have a resolution for us to prepare?
That would be great.
Yes, yeah. I don't know how we do that for next meeting. It's not going to be a workshop. I don't want to discuss it next meeting. We discussed it. I want to ask the manager to prepare our fit.
Absolutely.
Do you need a resolution from us? Do they do that?
No. I'm going to look at Bloomfield's.
Bloomfield, I have a copy of it. I know Gabby, you want, you have a, I've seen it.
Just a couple pages. Thank you, Gabby.
We'll just throw it on the agenda for next meeting, just to go out.
Yes.
Oh, we didn't notice.
Just to go out.
We're not spending any money.
Right.
All right, thank you. Good, thank you, Tom. Orders?
Orders number? Orders number one for introduction and ordinance for advising sale of townshipal property not needing public fee to start private sale pursuant to NJSA 48 calling 12-13B5.
Motion for introduction, second. Motion made in second for introduction. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePanyan?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
Orders number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification and compensation plans.
Make a motion for introduction, second. We have a motion made in second for introduction. Clerk, Madam Clerk, who put this ordinance on?
Township manager.
We have a motion made in second for introduction.
Yes.
Motion made in second for introduction. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePanyan?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
Number three, an ordinance creating personal positions and adopting classification compensation plans.
Make a motion for introduction, second. Motion made in second for introduction. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePanyan?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
And four, an ordinance creating personal positions and adopting classification and compensation plans.
Make a motion for introduction, second. Motion made in second for introduction. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePanyan?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
Okay, ordinances for public hearing, second and final read.
Orders number one for public hearing and ordinance to amend or revise general ordinances of the township of Belleville, Chapter 8-8 entitled Designated Loading Zones.
Make a motion open for public hearing, second. We have a motion made in second to open for public hearing. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePanyan?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes. We are now open for public hearing on this ordinance and this particular ordinance only. If there's anything to ask or question or comment to make. Do we have anybody on the phones for this? Oh, crank the clock.
I just want to know where is this located? What is this for?
Chief? 295 Quarter.
That's, uh, Quarter Street, 295.
Yes, 295 Quarter.
295 Quarter Street.
What, is that the laundry?
Spencer Industries. Spencer Industries.
All right, but this on the?
Street? No, this is the, this is the Rossmann.
I looked at the wrong one, then hold on.
This is the second read.
Second reading.
First one, second reading, 295 Quarter. I'm at a, I'm at a order.
295 Quarter.
That's number two, man.
It's 295 Quarter, Mayor.
295 Quarter.
Spencer Industries.
Kelly?
It's, uh?
Courtland, sorry.
Monday to Friday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Vinnie.
Is this along the curb?
Yes. Here, tell it, get it on, yep.
No, I think you're going to see a lot more than you keep doing all these high-density ones. Washington Avenue, I think, before the survey is a disaster.
I do need you to keep your comments on this particular ordinance on Quarter Street.
Okay, well, I think you're going to have a lot more because of all this overdevelopment that you're doing, all this delivery, outline, delivery. We can't park. My customers can't get there. Fuck it, double parking.
Certainly make those comments during public comment. Any thoughts on this particular ordinance? No? Entertaining motion to close, move for final adoption? Check the phone. Oh, come on.
This is the council.
That's the council. Is there anyone there that would like to speak on this ordinance? No.
I don't know how we would decide who goes first. All right, entertaining motion to close, move for final adoption.
Motion, second.
We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePanyan?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
Orders number two for public hearing and ordinance to amend or revise general ordinances of the township of Belleville, Chapter 8-16 Handicap Parking Spaces.
Make a motion open for public hearing, second. Motion made in second for public hearing. This is dressed down, Dad, Mr. Council?
Hey, we did that. 15 minutes getting changed. I brought my suit in my office.
Record reflect, the attorney has shown up.
I was on the phone.
Casually dressed. I'm sorry, we have a motion made and second for open?
Public.
Open public hearing. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePanyan?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes. So we are open in?
We're open for public commenting on this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance only. Hearing not. Anybody on the phone?
Anyone there?
Okay. Entertaining motion to close, move for final adoption.
Motion, second.
Okay, motion made in second to close, move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePanyan?
Yes.
Brazziana.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumlow Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Now, we have the part of the meeting for public commenting. Entertaining motion to open public comment, once we're open, all residents have about five minutes to speak, they can speak about almost anything, anything they wanna speak about, we ask you to try to keep the comments to the public, uh, please state your name and address for the record, and if you're here for the first time, we're gonna ask you to just come forward and use the microphone when you state your name and address for the record. Need a motion to open public comment?
Motion, second.
Your motion made in second to open public commenting, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePanyan.
Yes.
Brazziana.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumlow Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Gary, three oh seven Fairway Avenue, Bellville. First, I'd like to ask you, Mayor, you told me that you were gonna give me a list of the names of the people that were at that meeting in front of my house, and I received that from you, I hope that you can, to meet my, you know, who the contact, I'm gonna have to talk about something. Uh, second of all, what engineers are doing the study that Gabby's talking about?
We don't have an engineer.
We're not sure.
I hope they're not using Tom Harris.
We're gonna issue RFP and.
Okay, because Tom Harris was there when they were filling in illegally, filling in the graveyard, all right, I told him it was gonna happen, and sure enough, it happened. There was never any permits pulled from Essex, Mars, and Bergen County Soil Conservation, never anything recorded by them, there was none for the DEP, New Jersey, and Bellville and Bloomfield, no permits whatsoever pulled for filling that in, and our town engineer is standing there with me and arguing with me that filling in is not gonna affect us, and sure enough, it has, okay? All the fill that they're doing, you see the way the water runs, comes through the, um, the golf course hill and the graveyard, retirement Bloomfield, down the bottom, you could see all the stones and everything that, uh, that's put into the river there and down alongside the park, Fairway Park, you see the stones that are filling in, this is something that's been going on for years, Mary Santor used to dredge that, and it stopped, it, it helped the problem, not stopped it, it helped the problem, all right? You, you have these graveyards that put all this here, the dirt in there, filled all this land in, they filled in where they built the mausoleum in Bloomfield, I was at the meeting in Bloomfield, and they specifically told them, no more filling, all right? They were told by Bloomfield, they were told by Bellville, they kept filling, they come in there with tandem trucks, filling all this here low level land, where the water used to run over, they filled it in, because they called the bottleneck at that point, and that bottleneck has raised the water level in Bellville to flood us as much as it is now, all right? I come here and say this to council before, for twenty years, all right, and I keep getting the same thing, you're contacting this one, you're contacting that one, everybody's contacting, nothing is getting done, all right, let me finish, I only got five minutes, okay? So, I appreciate anything that you're trying to do, and I'm not saying yous aren't doing anything.
Been there with the DEP.
But you wanna know something, what you can do, yous aren't doing, and that annoys me, all right? If, 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 somebody's filling someplace and everything illegally, you would come and you would give them a cease and desist order, stop what you're doing, don't do no more, and, so why aren't we giving them a cease and desist? Don't let them put no more graves in, in that area until the DEP makes up their mind what they're gonna do to mediate this situation, all right, because they keep throwing in, putting in these graves there, and then when are you gonna do? Nobody wants to see somebody's grave, even their family's grave, that'll go up because it'll be a flooding problem, everything, and they're not gonna do that, they haven't done anything for years. I'd like to see you take action on one thing, the least you can do, the least, is, is tell them, no more graves in that location, they have other locations, it's not that they, it's gonna stop them from putting graves in, there's other locations, and there's a whole another area up the other end, do something to show us that, that yous are doing, that yous are really acting, not just passing the buck, saying we're contacting this one, contacting that one. Ray Smalling came down, hung the DEP, seen it, told us to do the three violations that he seen, and then when he heard a reporter was there, oh.
Thank you, Gary.
Got it, you know, so please.
Thank you.
Stop them from putting graves in there until the DEP makes up their mind what they're gonna do with their.
Thank you.
Bellville Avenue, two eighty-seven Fairway Avenue, um, I'm gonna continue on what Gary just started, all right, um, we've been promised, you spoke into congresspeople, senators, letters have gone out, where's the follow-up? There's been no follow-up, there's been no action at all, what is the town's plan, short-term media, uh, intermediate plans and long-term plans for this situation? Back in October, I spoke in front of this council, we asked about a survey, we asked about a resolution, Gary was here, there was a whole bunch of us here, nothing, absolutely nothing, council has done absolutely nothing.
I have to disagree with you.
You have, you have sent letters.
Well, please, I've shown up, I brought our senator there, I brought our assembly people there, I brought the county.
But where's the follow-up?
I brought the DEP.
Michael, where's the follow-up?
All the emails that you're CC'd on to them, and you're CC'd on every single one, that's called follow-up.
Okay, the last email was sent two weeks ago. That's inadequate follow-up.
I will, you know what, if the town manager was here today, he's here full-time, he's here forty hours a week, I'll make sure he sends an email every couple days, if that helps.
That would, yeah, 'cause you know what, the greasy, oh, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, is that the?
Yeah.
Is that the expression?
Yes.
Okay, so, do we have any town plans in terms of what's going on on Fairway and in the flooding areas? Gabby, thank you very much for your report and your information.
So, that, again, and I, I, I know that you guys are passionate because you live there, I know your houses get flooded, I understand all that, but to hear, to sit up here and constantly us being in motion and contacting people and showing up and being there with people, and then having things like Gabby, who's part of our Green Team, come here, educate us on next steps, hearing the conversation we just had about issuing an RFP to hire, that's things being done, I mean, that's what we're doing.
Oh, in matter of things being done, Gabby should've been here in October, and Gab, I'm sure Gabby had the information in October, okay, so, I mean, I'm talking about in a timely fashion, I've lived on Fairway for ten years and been flooded out twice, that's, that's really unacceptable.
But it is a federal flood zone, just so the residents understand that, it, it is a federal flood.
It is, and like other areas in this town, I'm doesn't, you know, it's not just Fairway that needs the mitigation, okay, and it's, and now who's responsible for getting the, um, the survey done? Who's gonna take all the reins? Who's gonna be the accountable person? There's no one accountable for doing any of this.
So, the.
That, I mean, I, you know, I, again, I appreciate everything that's been done.
I'm glad you, you say that, 'cause it doesn't sound that way all the time, who's gonna take care of it? This council's gonna issue an RFP next week, or at our next council meeting, they'll go out to bid, engineers will bid on it, we will then allocate money and vote for them, and those outside professional engineering companies will do their work, it's gonna take some time, it's not gonna be done in a week, it's not gonna be done in two weeks, when their report is done, we'll receive it, and then we take the next steps, it's, I know it's frustrating, but it's a process.
Because this was discussed back in October, it's taken five months to get here, it's taken five months to have Gabby come.
In those five months, the DEP had been on-site, the DEP has issued cease and desist.
Soon after the flood, and absolutely.
So, I mean, I mean, full respect, man.
And, and wait, let me finish, 'cause again, I have the five minutes.
I'm gonna give you extra time, it, it's hard for you to sit there and say, nothing's been done, I've had the DEP on-site, they've issued letters, they've issued cease and desist orders, our town manager is not here today, has been in contact with our counterparts in Bloomfield, they've done an investigation over the golf course.
Yes.
There's things happening.
Okay, speaking of the golf course, the investigation, what was the investigation, what the outcome of the investigation? Let me just tell you, now they have taken, um, a retention pond, dug it up, taken all the dirt from the retention pond, moved it closer to the river so that they don't get flooded, and behind my house, I have a retaining wall, and the retaining wall now has a mound of dirt that's been very nicely packed down, they took down the trees, which of course help absorb the water, but we're not even gonna go there from an environmental perspective, and they have put this mound of dirt so that the next flood, all that dirt's coming over, you know that, and they had done, and so they're preventing the water from going onto the golf course, but that's gonna create the situation on the avenue, on the street, so the water is just gonna come right to the street and down the front of, down the block, and instead of the houses only going to Riverdale that are gonna be flooded, it's gonna start going down Riverdale and up that hill, so it's totally inappropriate what they're doing, and where's, and there's no permits, as Gary has said, there's no permits being put.
Just, and just so everybody else, just so everybody else in the audience knows, I respect the opinions of residents, but just because a resident says there's no permits or no one's been inspected, that doesn't necessarily mean it's true, we have been in contact.
I've been in contact.
We've been in contact with Bloomfield, Bloomfield has sent an inspector out there, the inspector has gotten out of track, and has been communicating with the manager, manager's not here today, but I can tell you that the gist of it was, they didn't find the golf course doing anything wrong.
Right.
They didn't find the golf course doing anything wrong?
Not as far as permit certification, no, there's no, nothing wrong as far as permits. I don't wanna speak for Anthony, 'cause Anthony was the one that actually did speak to the township.
When you raise the floodplain, that's incorrect.
I'm, I'm.
I know, I'm not arguing with you, and I may sound very argumentative, and I don't, I don't mean to, but this is absolutely.
Relaying, relaying what our manager has, I know for certain, he has been in touch with the city, uh, township of Bloomfield, and, and inquired as to your concern about of the illegality of them doing the work there.
Because when, when checked at the various agencies, they didn't have any regular permits, just, just saying.
It may be, ma'am, and don't, it may be that they're not required in that township, I don't know, okay?
Okay, yeah, you're right.
But, but.
But this is something we should be made aware of.
I'm just saying, if it wasn't, we're saying not, but if that wasn't, I know for a fact, that Anthony, the manager, did do it, I know that for a fact.
I, I saw part of it.
Again, I don't wanna speak for him, but I do know that much that he did, was in contact with them, and he did check on your request of, of illegally, uh, doing the work there, and it was not found to be illegal.
Because, I mean, it's, and you know, when you're, the floodplain is gotta stay intact, okay, for the water flow, and it's not happening at this point, and you can go right now, the backhoe's in my backyard, the front loader, whatever the machine is called, it's in my backyard, I listen to the beep, beep, beep all day long, and they're just digging and digging and digging and moving the dirt closer to the river, which is totally inappropriate. Uh, Marine Pump, we have a Marine Pump that should be there in Fairway, is it up, is it operational, is it installed?
I do not know, I don't see the MWD director here, and again, unfortunate manager's not here, but I'm sure the chief will have access.
Right, everything we say down.
No, I, yeah, I appreciate it, okay, but, um, and a responsible person, a target, a head person, a person to spearhead what's going on, might be beneficial as opposed to just the council in general, people need to be held accountable.
That would be the engineering company, once we hire them, and the town managers are really responsible for all those, yeah, it wouldn't be us, 'cause we're not.
There's, it needs to be some communication between the residents that know getting flooded, and the person that's in charge of doing the, or following up, 'cause that's where we're failing is the follow-up.
I, I've written letters to the, to the neighborhood.
Mr. Frank Antoni, I'll skip over what I was gonna speak over, and I'll reiterate and follow-up on these two people. When you say, just because people say something, not true, whenever the Essex Hudson Bergen Soil Conservation District, whenever you move more than five thousand square feet of soil, which is only a fifty by a hundred lot, you have to get a permit, it's not rumor, it's not because I said it, 'cause Gary said it, the Soil Conservation, that used to be on Bloomfield Avenue in West Caldwell, they moved, they're right here now, right on Orchard Street in Bloomfield, a half mile away, Gary and I went there physically, we showed them pictures of what's being done, they investigated, and they come back, no, no permits were taken, what happens now? Your local officials have to take action, so don't say it's just 'cause people say it, we actually went there, twenty-some odd years ago, as Gary said, we met with Ray Smalling, he's walking down the river, they says, that dam is illegal, that's illegal, that fill is illegal, this is not just a rumor, you know, in hyperbole on behalf of citizens, we've actually done it, right? No follow-up, we followed up, called the DEP, many, what's going on there, oh, yeah, they're looking into it, now, what you're gonna do is study and hire engineers, engineers put out a report for who pays them, okay? Eighteen years with the Besseck River Basin, we had the Army Corps of Engineer, I think they're assumed to be qualified, although we proved they're wrong, uh, I don't know if you're studying, just Google, now with technology, you can Google, look at all the mistakes they made, that Lockahatchee, whatever the name, river in Florida, they redidverted it because of flooding, it was worse than ever, they had to redo it, and there's a whole list built of things, my eighteen years, we uncovered mistakes that the Army Corps of Engineer made, right? We got a problem here in Bellville, it's overdevelopment, like what happened, Lincoln Park and Wayne, all the flooding up there, many engineering studies were done over the years, Congressman Rose, you know, he hired engineers, and, oh, just money for this engineer, money, when laymen and the Besseck River Coalition got involved, we did it, I, two others, and about eight college students, interns, went around, went to the towns, found where all these homes were getting flooded out, it turns out that Congressman Robert Rose's brother, Row Construction, was illegally allowed to build hundreds of homes in the floodplain and the floodway, now this is what's going on here now, we are overdeveloping our town, the human cages on Washington and William at the planning board hearing, I asked the engineer architect, where's the pervious area? Uh, she's over here with her, what do you call it, pointer, and she couldn't find it, then she went up to the top, there was a half inch, I said, scale drill, what's it look like? About twelve inches, all right? That monster project, you took every bit of pervious area, maybe ninety-nine percent of it, right, and then they asked the engineer, where's it going? Oh, we're putting a new pipe in, a pipe to where? Right? Oh, oh, the storm system, good, do you know where that goes to? And look at the tape of the meeting, ba, 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 I said, well, I know where it goes, it goes down to the Seck River, and we get a big storm and high tide, all that water came going in the river, and we suffer up here, this is your responsibility, as they said, I've been there, watch, truckloads upon truckload, they didn't redo an area because they have some flood damage, they literally brought in dozens and dozens of truckloads of stuff and filled it in there, which these folks, maybe Gary, he's number one on the list down there, they get flooded, this is corruption and, and, indisputable, so, you gotta take action, you gotta go and find them, or insist that somebody find them for doing, the cemetery, like I said, thirty-five years ago, when Gary moved there, both sides of the river are the same, we literally watched, I watched, they're just pushing the dirt in and filling dirt in there and all, my neighbor is buried there, we saw where they built the monument, uh, mausoleums, on ground that was formerly hundreds of feet lower, you know, it's, you've gotta do something about this, and it's not, and, and then, you're gonna hire and spend our money, you're not gonna get any resolution, but I tell you why these things happen. Uh, when people give me money, my laundry, I wash their clothes, when people give me money, my construction business, I do their bathroom or their kitchen. I'm sorry you didn't invite me Friday night to Angledwood Cliffs, your thousand dollar a plate donation, I says, and who sponsored it? The builder of Washington and William, so.
Do need your props.
When they gave you a thousand dollars, what are you giving them?
Thank you, your time.
You're giving them this overdevelopment, which is making this flooding worse, so the problem is right here, we don't need, you're gonna waste money on engineers, you're not gonna solve the problem because of corruption in this entire state, but here in Bellville, you're killing, with all these other projects, which right now, next to Shocklight, that's absorbing dirt, you're gonna pay what we're squaring.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Antoni, you're, no, you're out of time, Mr. Frank.
Let's, let's get the truth out, we don't need more studies, we know the problem. Stop the golf course and the cemetery for creating more problems for the township of Bellville.
I do need you to sit down, thank you. Anybody else?
Joes, ninety-five Bell Street. Actually, Mr. Frank Antoni touched on something, I'm not gonna bring it up, as, apparently we all know, it's a premier developer from, uh, Angledwood Cliffs, and it's ironic the way I see it, what's happening here, they get a twenty-five year pilot, wait about twelve months, eighteen months, and then they do a fundraiser for, uh, teen melham, that's what it appears to be, I mean, that smells more like Rico here, you know, and then you stack the planning board appointments, which were still questionable without the legality of them, and it's interesting, because in this article, I agree with you, in twenty-seventeen, in 2017, you made a comment about that property, that you needed to want it developed as residential, according to the Observer article, they said you wanted, they said you wanted, uh, commercial and retail, which I a hundred percent agree with you, but residential, I disagree with you on that, but that was in the Observer, I didn't, I didn't write the Observer, you have to check with them on that.
I didn't write it either.
Well, that's what they said, so you have to check with them about that. You know, um, in the last meeting, I made an error here when I asked you if you sold your properties, well, you didn't really sell it, you have a lease with probably, with an option to buy, and it is the developer that, uh, is developing around town, and I think he's still thinking he, he overpaid you 1.3 million dollars on that property. And, you know, he's, I believe he's the same individuals that looked and built a ninety-unit apartment building on the corner of Graylock Parkway and Union Avenue, it's not him, it's another guy here, which I'm not gonna mention his name, which you, we all know that, and you know, the only reason I come back here is because you invited me back, if I don't get straight answers, I'm gonna keep coming back, when I get a straight answer and transparency, I will not be back here.
I answer all Belleville-related questions.
I'm, I'm not done speaking, my, my five minutes. Al, here's the other thing here.
You have two minutes left of that five minutes.
Well, I think, I'm gonna start clocking myself, cuz I think you're wrong, that's why you don't, I offered to buy you a clock to put up here, so I can time myself, but you won't, thank you, wonderful. Alright, now, there's one issue here, if you remember, you did a, a great publicity stunt about the lead pipes, and you got this big survey done, and, uh, apparently, there's 2,000 people gave you their phone numbers and email addresses, I have people telling me, how did the mayor get my email address, and somebody from Town Hall with the initials E L is calling them, inviting them to your pizza parties and things like that? So, who else has access to that list of 2,000 people? And these people swear there's no connection except for the lead pipe survey, so somebody in this Town Hall is allowing access for your campaign. You wanna answer that one?
I'm gonna answer all Belleville-related questions.
No, it's not, it's not, no, it's a fact, I'm using up my two minutes, you know it, I know you a lot better than that.
Anybody else? Hopefully with Belleville, probably not, Belleville-related questions?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street, usually I, I start my interrogation the evening with, directly with Mr. Melham, and tonight, I want to talk about your, your principal defender, your number-one enabler, and I'm glad Mr. Martino.
You're gonna still direct all comments to the chair.
We're the chair, what am I talking about?
No, not for the chair, you're gonna direct all the comments to me.
I knew that, right after you were sworn in, that Mr. Martino was gonna be trouble, because within days of you taking the gavel, he sent me a threatening letter, telling me that I had ten days to give him my camera, give him my passwords to YouTube and my Facebook account, or he was going to have me arrested by the Belleville Police Department for theft of township property. Now, either this was petty vindictiveness as your private attorney, or he's grossly incompetent, cuz I had to explain to Mr. Martino that based on a series of emails with Mr. Tucci back in 2016, when he was our town manager, the Disney Corporation had asked Mr. Tucci to use some video I had taken, at which Steve Rabel, Minnie Cazarelli, and Teresa Ruiz were present, it was the Cortland Playground dedication ceremony, they asked for permission to use that video. Mr. Tucci informed them that none of the video belonged to the township, it was all my property, and that they would have to get a release from me, so I have numerous emails with legal counsel for the Disney Corporation, again, reinforcing the fact that all that material belongs to me.
And you're doing Belleville business today?
Yes, I'm leading up, now, I could go through a litany of problems that you and Mr. Martino have created for this township, but I wanna focus on one particular matter, Mario started to address this a moment ago, and that is the, uh, the sale of your property next door. I want to hand out, I want to distribute to all the council members this packet, Mark, I would quickly do, could you please pause the clock, cuz it's gonna take a minute for this.
No, it's okay, you can keep talking.
No, I, I have to wait till this gets in your hands.
First ones in someone's hands are ready.
I need it to everyone's hands.
Is there one for me?
You get, there's an extra one for you, yes. What this document is, is over legal ease of the sale of your property next door on Seventy Washington, to the same developers who are responsible for the Whiskey Priest, the building across the street from the Whiskey Priest, they wanted, two years ago, to put up a building next to the middle school where the King's Window Store is, and I understand through channels that they are looking to put up a ninety-unit building, mixed-use building on the corner of Graylock and Parkway, so here you are, here you are, selling your property, and I've been told by several real estate professionals that the sale price listed in this document, which is 1.36 million dollars, has been grossly inflated and is demonstrably quid pro quo between you and the L O C, this, the L O C's name is M C Q 381 L O C. By the way, the two gentlemen involved with this organization, where do they have their listed address? On Campbell Avenue, at 20 Campbell Avenue, if that rings a bell, it should, because it's a rundown house right next to where Joe Longo used to live, he was at 16 Campbell, so that's where they have their, they have their address at, at 20 Campbell Avenue.
Is it next to their neighbor or somebody?
It's just, uh, an interesting coincidence, that of all the places they could use in Belleville.
Or nothing coincident.
But, but in any case, you are, you are deriving profit from developers for personal matters, which is being handled by your personal attorney, and this raises a very important question, is Mr. Martino actually the township attorney, or is he really your private attorney looking out for your interests rather than the township's interest? I really think that Mr. Martino is seriously conflicted here, and that it is up to this council now to decide whether he is, he should be allowed to continue in this role, that it, perhaps he should be suspended at this point, just like Mr. Conti at the planning board meeting two weeks ago, when he enunciated all the criminality you've engaged in with planning board appointments for the last two and a half years, he made the motion to suspend the planning board, and his colleagues agreed. I think the council needs to make a motion tonight to suspend Mr. Martino until you have appropriate legal authorities, look at all this evidence, and decide if he can properly serve in this capacity without really in disguise being your, your private attorney. His interest, in my opinion, that of many others, is not in this town's best interest, it's in your personal interest, and he's enabling you to milk this position for all it's worth, enriching you in the process, so I leave it to all of you, have the discussion, suspend him, and let legal authorities decide if he should remain in this position.
Okay, by the bell, thank you, Mr. Sheldon, for your comment. Anybody else, public commenting? You're done? I'll adjourn to motion to close public commenting.
Anyone present?
Motion to close public commenting?
Motion to close.
Motion made to, to close public commenting, court call roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Dependents.
Yes.
Presleyan.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Probell.
Yes.
Jim Lumberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is consent agenda. Alright, and I guess we have nothing to pull, so a motion to move the consent agenda?
Motion.
With motion made in seconds, to move the consent agenda, court call roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Dependents.
Yes.
Presleyan.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Probell.
Yes.
Jim Lumberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is new business. Hearing none, seeing none? I just have a quick question, we have to talk to you to see whether this is a completely interesting one. D C A, D C J, who? Anybody you wanna call? Okay. Anybody else?
Before we go to private, I just wanna thank Gabby, I know a comment was made that it took her five months to come up here and talk to us tonight, but I just wanna remind everyone that she does volunteer for all this, uh, we're lucky to have her volunteer her resources to us between the Green Team, between Walkin' the River multiple times, um, yes, it's five months later, but we know you've been working on this stuff for years, so, thank you.
I also like to thank Gabby, because about a month ago, we, well, we had this conversation, so I'm proud on behalf of the council to bring her forward, so I brought her forward, I don't take too much credit, but I did bring her forward to share her knowledge with you all.
Just to the chair, in October, you're right, Carol, we did discuss doing a study over there, and it's taken us, how many months now to get there?
My comment is.
And that's, that's the reality, go back and check.
See, but I, I do understand it all, but there was, there was an email sent 2011, that is when your name was all over, not since 2011.
Tom, I don't care what you're saying, is we had this on the agenda hack in October, nobody reacted to it, nobody wanted to do anything, like, now all of a sudden.
But to the public.
I may have not been here for that meeting, councilman. I was here, I was here for that, in fact, Mike, I've been here for over 500 meetings, so, let's, let's not talk about who wasn't here, who was.
So, just, if I may, so I totally agree with how the residents feel down in Fairway and other flood zones, I totally agree with it, and my heart's out to it, but I ask myself, again, just sitting up here three and a half years, and not knowing the history, which you know I don't know the history, in three years, which in, since Ida happened, I believe this council has didn't work in the little bit of time in moving things forward than the past, and we're on the right track, and we have to get here, you're a hundred percent right, but again, it's, it's, it's moving faster than it ever did, and we're gonna pursue it, we are, and I just, I just, knowing about it now, learning about it, since Ida happened, here we are.
Alright. That's where we're going.
You don't need a legal opinion, they.
I need a legal opinion.
I, I don't feel like I'm being counseled here.
He's got a question, he's trying to give you a answer.
The Ethics Board, the, the state of New Jersey, Board of Ethics, there's an opinion, I, I will give you the ethics opinion.
I appreciate that.
I will give you a copy of the ethics opinion, I've been doing this for thirty-four years in Bluefield and Belleville, representing council members, mayors, there's, because I do my research before I do anything, Mr. Sheldon, and there is an ethics opinion right on point.
Did you, did you, Mr. Martino?
There is an ethics opinion right on point, that allows a township attorney, a board attorney, prosecutor, a public defender, to represent council members, mayors, and so forth, and I, I'll provide that to you, so it's.
I appreciate that, I'll, I'll also sweep my own account.
You do that, I'm, I'm serving that, I'm not the only council member that you've represented either.
In, in, I, well, that I won't divulge, but in, 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 in Bluefield, I have for sure. Alright, uh, next, uh, next item on our agenda is gonna be executive session, what happens now is I'm adjourned to motion to go to the executive session, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to eventually clear the room, while we're in executive session, no action will be taken, the meeting is not over, uh, once we're done with our executive session, we'll make a motion to leave the executive session, come back into the public meeting, uh, and then we're just gonna adjourn, there will be no action taken during, during executive,